It is Thursday, October 12th, 2017. This is a budget meeting of the Oregon Village Board, part of which will be a joint meeting with the Park Board. It is 5:30 PM. I'd like to call a meeting to order and request a roll call, please.
Bally, Boudreau?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Grenier? Jacobson?
Here.
And Staten?
Here. Okay, so we're gonna flip to the second page, item number 10. And do the second bullet point, which is the recreation program. Include youth centers 2018 budget, and that's pages 27 and 27A in our binder. Payment to school district for running summer rec program. And villages continue support for the youth center, increasing annual payment from $9,000 to $10,000 for the youth center. Plus, we do donate their rent, which is valued at $6,000. I'd like to welcome Diane Newland to the meeting for a couple of comments, please. Shouldn't make any difference. Are both mics on there, Dan? Yeah, they're both on.
Good evening.
Evening.
Welcome, Diane.
So, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about why we asked for an increase in funding. And also to thank you for your continued support of the program. I did bring in just a few numbers. I didn't bring a ton. So, for this year, January through September, our participant number is at 4,649 kids. So, participants are, you count every time you walk through the door. Our Village of Oregon participant number is 3,079 kids. And then Oregon in general, which is kids we haven't collected enough data on to know where they live, was at 203. Our unduplicated number for the year is 196. That's each kid counting once per year, no matter how many times they come. The Village of Oregon was 81 of those kids. And Oregon, without having collected enough data, is 46. So, do you have any questions?
I saw that you have 30 to 35 youth each day. I think that's very commendable. And I would also say that the length of time the youth center's been open is very commendable. Most don't last that long, I don't think. So, we appreciate very much what you do with those kids.
And as of November, we'll have hit our three-year mark of being on our own, as our own organization. So, that's really exciting.
That time is gonna fly pretty fast.
I know, right? So, and we did ask for an increase this year. Just, we haven't asked for an increase in the past, at least since I've been here. This will be my eighth budget meeting, I think. And with the cost of everything going up and with the volume of kids we have coming, a little bit of extra funding would go a long way to help us feed them, keep them warm, all of the things that we do. So...
So, Steve, I recommend the increase. I thought it was a reasonable request.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, too. Very reasonable.
So, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Are there any questions for Diane or any comments?
Just thank you very much. You know, continue to do great, really great and important work for the village and the surrounding communities.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to work out here and it's my honor to work with the kids that we get to work with every day. So, thank you so very much.
Okay, so we have that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. You can go back and watch kids. It's a lot more exciting than watching us.
Have a good night, guys.
Wait a second.
Until Jeff gets on.
I don't think you heard you.
Oh, I heard.
No, you're not on yet. You're not on yet. No.
No.
I was gonna say, it explains that one day why I saw those kids going in the front door, out the side door, and coming back in the front door of the youth center all day long.
Next is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight. The amount of $28,552.65 for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Staten?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item four is community input. Anyone from the community in the audience who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we will proceed to the joint meeting with the Park Board. So, if you want to call the Park Board to order, Rich?
Okay, we'll call the Park Board meeting to order and request roll call.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Jacobson? Knutson?
Here.
LeBron? Miller? Stromanger?
Here.
In sight. Here.
Thank you. So, item six, which is in our binder, is pages 26, 26A, and 27. It's the 2018 general fund parks budget. Discussion possible action by Park Board. And then the Village Board have included the general fund parks budget in the 2018 preliminary budget and completing the park and recreation plan update in 2018. So, we'll go to the Park Board and just need a motion a second for approval, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the general Park Board budget.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
Let's just get it on the floor.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion over here?
Well, to do what?
To...
Steve, usually the Park Board, when they make a motion, then they vote, and then the Village Board...
That's right. I'm sorry.
But I thought now if you wanted, somebody wants to ask questions about it, we're happy to answer them.
Okay, so any questions or comments about the Park Board? The budget, pages 26.
I mean, this is, this is the park budget that's in the general fund. And Jeff prepares this for us. And we show the three summer LTEs in here, and these are the supplies, the woodchips and things that the park department uses. And then, as we note on the agenda, the Park Board and the Village Board, and actually the Plan Commission, has to get involved in this, the completion of the update to the park and rec plan in 18. And then that, that allows us, we have to have that, you have to have it updated every, well, you have to be updated every five years if you want to apply for a stewardship grant to this DNR. I mean, there's a number of reasons why you want to do it, but that's one of the critical ones.
Yeah, okay. So, to the Park Board for discussion of questions. And if none, then you can vote on it.
So, we can ask Jeff questions?
All you want.
On the other, that was $5,000 last year, now it's $10,000 this year?
Of the expenditure?
Mm-hmm.
Lisa, I don't have those pages.
I don't either. The budget, the budget for both years is $10,000.
Okay. Okay, the current budget, yeah, okay, that is, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Judy's looking.
I'm looking at the projection.
She's looking at the projection.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. And the $10,000 for woodchips for playground? And I, I know you spend that and plus more, correct? Or you try to take it out of other?
Yeah, exactly.
I think the need is more than $10,000.
Right. We, we've been trying to increase that over the last couple of years. I had kind of a learning experience in woodchips this year. It's a specialized, very, it's a costly specialized woodchip that comes from a specific manufacturer. It's not something that we can generate onsite or a tub grinder somewhere can generate onsite. It's screened and everything, so. And it's put at a depth of almost 12 inches. So, we tried to do, I think it's about four parks this year. And we'd like to do about another four next year is our, is our goal. But it, you know, it's hard to keep up with that because they decompose, but...
Do you feel like that's enough to keep yourselves on track? Or is it...
I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't wanna, I mean, I think what we've done in the past, like, I think this year, we actually, we decide to allocate some money that we, our picnic tables, we were able to refurbish more picnic tables this year rather than have to purchase new ones. And, and so, you know, when we can, when we can kind of put our save hats on, you know, with that, then we can spend a little more money on woodchips for putting in parks. The other thing, one of the costs that, well, we hadn't planned on is a volunteer group wanted to come in and fix up Gazner Park. And we felt they were gonna put the time and effort into everything that we should get woodchips for that. And so, we decided to allocate some additional money for woodchips for that and not spend it in somewhere else. So, it's like anything else. We, we try to, we balance things out a little bit depending on opportunities and, and, you know, resources.
Okay, so if you're, if you're comfortable with that, $10,000, then I am too.
Jeff, you have $3,500 set aside for thistle control and playgrounds?
Yes.
Did you have success with that program this past year, did you say?
No. It wasn't as successful as I wanted to because it wasn't, it wasn't given the attention by the individuals I asked to pay attention to it. And I've addressed that on a personnel level, or at least in, in a management level. I, my point has been with them is you have to spray and attack it, and then you're gonna have to go back and maintain to kill anything else that's coming up in between or if you don't happen to knock it down. And anyone who's done any kind of weed control in lawns knows it's not a one-hit-only kind of application. And quite honestly, the person that was in charge of that was, did not follow through with that, so...
I heard some complaints from parents about their kids being on the playgrounds after spraying.
There could not have been. We, when we, anytime that we sprayed, we actually kept the, we actually fenced off the entire playground area for up to seven days after spraying. And that's about twice as long as a manufacturer recommends.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any more discussion on questions for that? Okay, and ready to take a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Do I vote with the...
Twice, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of power on this one.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. So, that comes to the Village Board. And again, the approving the general fund parks budget. So, we need a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
So, I just have a question about that new park that's gonna come online off of Cusack Parkway, I believe?
Kelstrom Park?
Kelstrom, yeah. Is that in the budget?
That's the next budget item line here for under seven, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Yeah, so we'll...
Oh, it's a separate item?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions? Just by the motion, second for the general fund budget for the, for parks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Put item seven, pages 67, 68, and 68A, 2018 park fund. Discussion possible action by Park Board and Village Board of including park fund in 2018 preliminary budget. Possible action, hiring engineering firm to prepare construction bid documents for Kelstrom Park. And please refer to Director Public Works memorandum on page 68A in our binder. So, the same process here, Rich. It goes to the Park Board for motion second, discussion approval, and then back over to us.
Okay, we'll make a motion to hire... What would be, would it be for hiring an engineering firm?
Yeah.
Okay. For hiring, hiring the Town and Country Engineering Firm to prepare the construction documents for Kelstrom Park?
So, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I'll give a little background on this. Kelstrom family donated this land, obviously, to the village about a year ago. About, about a year ago.
Yep.
Small sliver of land that's actually the entrance to the business park area over there. As I understand, Alvin Kelstrom was a, was kind of a founder of Whiskel, I believe. And obviously, their main, one of their main facilities is right across the street, and they were looking for a memorial-style park there. There is budget money for this, for this improvement. Is it in 2017 budget?
We, we borrowed in 2017.
That's right. That's what I thought. The, the problem with it is, as a municipality, we're, we're bound to a $25,000 cap for not competitively bidding and not, you know, not, we can't just award a project for, if it's over $25,000. We're fairly certain this is well over $25,000 with the concrete, the landscaping. And we think it's gonna be kind of a prefabricated gazebo-type structure. They're nice. You've, I hate to use the word gazebo-type structure, but it's prefabricated. You see them all over the place, but... So, that's where we need, we need the engineering firm to be able to provide us the bid documents to get us to this point where we can, they can do a site plan, and then we can send that out for public bidding.
So, did you say that Kelstrom was paying for some of it? Was that what they...
They're, they're paying for the memorial sign.
Yeah. Memorial sign and plaque. That'll, we'll, we'll work with them and determine kind of where the location will be and whether it's under the shelter or at the entrance to the park. One of the things that we kind of have with this, too, which is kind of nice, is kind of a bumpout area for bikes that we're, we're looking at kind of a, we've decided we're gonna put the...
We're gonna put the fixing thing on the bike trail.
That's right. But it'll have bike racks and everything for people if they want to stop because that's right along the existing bike path.
Yep.
Jeff, the company that we hired to build, to do the, was that Van De Waal? I think they did the concept plan.
Correct.
Are we done with them on this project?
They, they do not do the construction documents. They, they're, they're planners, and they get to make the very nice pictures, but they don't do the bidding documents that we need, which is kind of the, there's some, there's legal documents and specifications, and that's just not there. We talked to them, and they said, no, we don't do that, so... And you'll notice the price, there was some, a considerable price difference. I believe the high number there is probably overscoped. I, when I sent this out, I, I made sure to let them know we were looking for something very simple. I was a little concerned with the, the number from Town and Country, but I did confirm with them directly and in writing that they were comfortable with that, so...
Any other discussion? Questions? Take a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, all in, in favor of the, of the motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That comes to us, then. So, we need a motion second to approve the contract with Town and Country, an amount of $2,200 for preparing design and bidding documents for proposed Kelstrom Park.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the board?
I just had a question. So, on page 67, under the budget notes under park fund expenses, there's the $130,000 for park playground equipment. And then budget notes, $50,000 general fund field development, $80,000 Kelstrom Park.
Correct.
Do we really think it's still gonna cost $80,000 to develop that park? So, I remember having this discussion at Village Board earlier, and we said that we didn't want to spend that much money. Remember? Came in like at $81,000?
Yep.
So, we're still, we're back to that number?
We borrowed, we actually borrowed $82,000 to, for the park.
Okay.
And we talked about where that we should, you know, save $50,000. We just thought we'd show, that's what we have as the borrowed money. If we don't spend the money in this park, at the Kelstrom Park, we can spend it on JC Park or something like that. It'll be, it's in this fund.
Okay.
And, and the, the Park Board and the Village Board's gonna have to award the, the contract to the, to the contractor anyways. You're gonna have to see it again.
Well, we'll, yeah, and I envisioned having a preliminary design brought before the Park Board and Village Board just to have buy-off and say, this is, you know, this is good. And with that'll come an estimate of what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, Van De Waal's, if I remember this correctly, to redo the chirp was like $22,000. And we walked out there, and we thought the chirp was in good shape, so... But we just thought, we'll show it. It would just fall into the fund balance of the park fund then anyway, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have a chance to, if we want to scale that back when we see what they propose, to fit what we think and the Park Board thinks is appropriate at that park, if we think that's too much.
The big unknown is really the, the shelter. And, you know, whether it's a, and I'd be happy to show you kind of a catalog I have.
Is this the prefab thing you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, those, those can be all over the board from, there's a real simple one in Brooklyn, right off the, the main drag there, down there near the old train station. Something similar to that and, you know, but those things go all over the board of how expensive they can be. So, I think we want to just be cautious.
Okay, yeah, I don't have any problem spending money on that. I just didn't want to spend a bunch of money on replacing the grass that looks pretty good at this point.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a big enough space to be looking at it as like a ball field or a soccer warm-up area or anything. It's really just a nice, it'll, it'll be a nice landscaped...
Yeah.
Serene location.
Other questions or comments?
So, I'm, I'm not seeing any allocations for maintenance of the new park to this point. I mean, we just haven't got there in the budget. But I remember a conversation that we had earlier about the park staff or the public works staff and how thin they are. So, I'm interested to see how, as we go through this process, you're gonna address that, bringing another park on board. Now, it means we have to mow that park, we have to pick that park up. And if we've got a staff that's already thin, I'll be interested to see how you plan to address that.
Yeah, we have, we have kind of, we have a staffing plan, and you'll see how we're adding, proposing to add staff in 2018.
So, it's in the public works budget?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mentioned it, Jeff, a little bit in the overview, the LTE for mowing on Monday, on Monday night.
Yeah, you know, right?
Yeah.
In my memory.
Sorry.
Yeah. You might have. I'll have to go back and watch the tape.
No, we'll talk about...
I do remember that.
We'll talk about it later. Sorry.
Any further discussion or questions? So, we have the, the motion is second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We're on to item eight, pages 79...
So, Steve, now we actually need to approve the park fund budget.
Okay, before you do the playing field stuff?
Yes. I have, I want to make a comment whenever there's a motion on the floor, make sure everyone knows about something here.
So, the Park Board does that first again, right?
Correct.
To approve their, their total budget?
For the park fund.
Okay.
So, so we need to have, we need, the Park Board needs to now make a motion to approve the 2018 park fund.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, for motion to approve the 2018 park fund. Jeff, second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention one thing. If you look under operating supplies and projected actual, there's a amount of $23,484. And so, if you're wondering why is that so high? That is because when we approved the new subdivision being done by Landopolis off of North Oak, Oak Lane Parkway, we, in that agreement, we agreed to return $19,500 of park fees that he paid back in '07, '08. Because he went from 80 dwelling units down to 54, so we had to return the park fee.
Okay.
So, that's why you see that. At the beginning of, well, beginning of '17, we had about $192,000 in the park fund, so we're, we're still okay by returning the money.
Okay.
What page are you on, Mike?
67. Yes, under operating supplies of...
Down toward the bottom.
Yep. $23,484. I just, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that, so...
Yeah. Do you have any other comments about the fund? Okay, so, Rich, it's back to you.
Yep.
All right. Okay, so it's been motion, you have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That comes over to the Village Board. Need a motion a second to approve the park fund budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so then we're on to item eight, pages 79 and 80. 2018 playing fields development. Discussion possible action by the Park Board and then the Village Board of Including Playing Fields in 2018 preliminary budget. That's developing JC Park West. And this pages 79 and 80. Yeah, make a motion for the, for the 2018 playing fields development to be included in the preliminary budget. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
No, seconded that.
Okay, is there comments or discussion?
The, the main items, you can see in here, is that we're budgeting, proposing to budget $500,000 for the village's investment in JC Park West. And we are working on a conceptual plan for that, and we'll be bringing that to the Park Board. Probably, it could actually happen in December. And then, well, maybe November, maybe December. And then we'll bring it back, we'll show it to the board and, yeah. And we've been working with Jamie Bush and the baseball association to work on the arrangement.
Okay, so as far as what they would contribute?
Yeah, what they would contribute, making sure that the park is being laid out the right way and everything, yep.
I remember a discussion last spring maybe, that they were going to be asked to contribute financially.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way it's gonna go.
So, so once we have the conceptual plan nailed down and everyone thinks it's a good idea, then we have to actually work out the arrangement, the formal arrangement between the village and the organizations.
Okay.
Yep.
And we actually think a portion, a significant portion of this could go towards constructing new parking lots that would be just south of the existing, we call it JC Park West parking lot, the one off of Oak Street, where the carnival rides park, when they're right before they're set up and taken down. You know, we, our, our feeling is, is we want to be able to construct parking lots along that side over there between the North Oak and the drainage way. And then eventually try to get at least one entire line of cars off of North Borough, or North Oak there, because it's just too dangerous.
So one of the things I've been talking to Jamie about is, you know, I've mentioned that to him a few times, and he, he has, has an interesting idea that possibly we could do that, but he also thinks that maybe we shouldn't be using some of our money for like the, the basic seed money to, to start development of the field. So, yeah, we'll work that out. That's just, that's a detail for future discussions.
Seed's not that expensive. Seed's not that expensive.
Excuse the pun, yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion to second, so we'll take a vote for including the playing fields in two thousand eighteen preliminary budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So we would need the most. For the two thousand eighteen budget.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on that?
I would just, um, I think I've mentioned this before, but I would throw out the idea of renaming that park, or perhaps raising some money for naming rights of that park, since there are no longer any JCs in Oregon.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know what, how you name things, but perhaps we could derive some income from that.
Yeah, yeah, the park board and the village board does that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
JC Park West just doesn't have much of a run to it.
Actually, you know what?
Playing the park, which can't find the TCS.
State, State Park, is that what you were thinking?
Well, if he wants to cop up some money, sure.
I'll mention it to Jamie, we're, we're talking about how to raise money, so.
Okay.
Sure.
I don't know.
Anything else on this item? So we have the motion to second for including JC Park West development and playing fields in two thousand eighteen budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So that gets us through the park board stuff there, but we want to have Jeff spend a little time on bike trails, give some explanation here before you adjourn. So, Jeff, you're on.
Okay.
I, I don't have enough of these, but I'm just gonna.
Another talk today with the Southern Wisconsin area Public Works Supervisors meeting. When we start talking about, I call them contagious projects, projects that continue to build upon each other, and sometimes the, the first couple of projects can be really difficult. And then, as, as people begin to, you, you know, see, see the progress, things continue to fall in line, and bike paths are, are great with that. You know, when we saw Keller Alphine Park go in and saw the number of people using that, and then the Rotary Trail went in, and we see an enormous use on, on that and people liking that. And, uh, one of the things that were, you know, has kind of, kind of hindered our to the downtown area. You know, we, we do have path all the way to the high school and, and those playing fields now. The, this was looked at ten years ago? Ten, twelve years ago, I think.
Well, we, we actually started looking seriously at this in oh nine.
Right.
Which, which actually ended, which led us to actually, uh, some, and see, we'll second this, why we bought to the Majio property.
Right.
We, we wanted to get the trail down Badfish Creek.
Right. Really wanted that connection down to kind of where Bar Oak was just reconstructed, and at that time, you're looking at options, and, and one of the options involved about a sixteen-hundred linear foot of ten-foot wide floating boardwalk. That's, use of floating, it's just sitting on pads, it's not like water floating. And I think the cost of that was over one point six million dollars. And at that time, I think everyone kind of said, well, you know, let's step back a little bit. Part of the downtown area is the railroad embankment, and getting through, over, under, around a railroad can be a very challenging prospect and extremely costly. To bring it down the, the Badfish Creek corridor there, you, you have to cross some private properties, which butt back up to All Color, you'll see on the map there. And then, uh, once you hit the railway embankment, you're really left with pretty much a tunnel, uh, uh, to go underneath, and I think some previous consultants have thrown some numbers, and it's been in the millions of dollars.
Yeah, it was.
To do the whole project.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Even just that piece from Earl, down the Quick Trip to go to the.
I mean, this is kind of going off of aerial photos and land that we own and everything, you know, we now own the Demagio Park area. We own the De, the DeGah Park area, the Florida Avenue properties, but the whole Lerner Park, and, and as it comes up, we actually own a right-of-way all the way back to where the, the tracky parking lot is back there. And we started looking at it and said, you know, future, if we can start looking at this as an option of, of pushing up to Lerner Park, across North Burke, Bar Oak Avenue at that location, we actually maintain a right-of-way and have a right-of-way back there to the east, and then probably an at-grade style crossing. There, there's a drainage way back there that we can, anyone who exercises or rides their bike or wreck, and we could have a dedicated bike lane along there. Proximity to the future library site, library site. And so, um, I think it can be done and done, done safely. And then, uh, fairly, Spring Street, I couldn't remember the road we work on, and, and a connection into the trail system there. So I think, I think this is a viable option. We would like to maybe have a consultant for, you know, not, I think we have five thousand dollars in there for a consultant to just take a look at that from a feasibility level in two thousand eighteen. It's like all good projects, you know, we want to really make sure we're making the right steps. Get an idea of some costs and, and possibly just, um, you know, a, a wetland viewer style view of, of the wetlands in the area, just to get an idea of any kind of pitfalls we might be facing with that. There's obviously problems along Market Street, um, as far as getting over there, but what we found over the time is sometimes people are interested in selling or converting or developing, and, and, you know, opportunities arise if you ask, so.
And, and, and another thing that came up recently, I don't know if Jeff mentioned it, is that just maybe, well, when the, when the state budget was signed, was it two weeks ago? They put a provision in the state budget, nobody, nobody will take responsibility for it, right, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah. That you cannot, you cannot use eminent domain for bike trails or pedestrian trails anymore. So let's say we, we own, we own all the property, as Jeff explained, from the West Side Park down to, uh, DeGah, down to DeGah Park, down to Bar Oak. We, we can, that's why we got Demagio Park, we own all the property, we can put the trail in, we have to worry about private owners. We, we cross Bar Oak, we own the very first lot that used, that's one of the houses we purchased after the flood. But everything else from there down to Quick Trip is all owned privately, and if one person would object to it, there goes the trail.
Kills it.
And, um, so, so we, we started thinking, well, we have to find a different route to, to go, and this was Jeff's, I think, really good idea. And, um, so like I said, there's, like Jeff said, there's some money in the budget. We actually borrowed money in seventeen to, to do this, we just didn't have time to do it this year, so we're gonna propose doing it next year.
We still think there could be a nice connection in that Florida Avenue area there, I say possible trail extension, uh, to the DeGah slash Bar Oak area. I still think that could be an important connection for those coming down, um, from that neighborhood in the Bar Oak area. What is that neighborhood? What, what, what was that originally called? That's your neck of the woods there.
Yeah, Hickory something.
Hickory, yeah, Hickory Estates or something.
Something like that, yeah.
And North Bar Oak's reconstructed, so it looks really nice and has a nice culvert crossing there too, so.
So other questions for Jeff?
Jeff, do you know, why was the, you know, there's that tunnel at the end of West Grove Street? What was that tunnel created for? It goes underneath the railroad tracks?
That's, that's the, that's for, uh, Badfish Creek.
Oh, it's for Badfish.
Yeah, the creek goes under, yeah.
Yeah, it's a really neat, actually.
It's a cool little tunnel.
A lot of people don't know it exists, but it's an old rock.
Yeah.
Style, arch.
That's nice.
But it's, that's where Badfish Creek is.
Right.
Yeah.
It.
And that'd be kind of wet.
This, this actually. Yeah. Well, you know, this is kind of interesting. So when Mark was here, we, and we put the, uh, the interceptor in in two thousand one or two, something like that. Mark, Mark got an easement from all the property owners, you know, that come, he came all the way from the treatment plant and went down on the north side of Badfish Creek out to, you know, to sort of the west side. And our, our idea has always been to, um, put a bike trail on top of that, so then we would, um, obviously for recreational, but also have access to the interceptor. And now we don't be able to do that, unfortunately. Well, we, we'll be able to do it from the West Side Park down to, uh.
We have access.
Dig Park.
I'm sure, I'm sure we have access, it's just, we're not allowed to pave it.
Exactly, yeah. Mark, Mark's, Mark's idea was that, you know, be paved and be able to, you know, have easy access to the interceptor for, for repair and maintenance, so. So we do have, actually have an easement on this side, on that side of Badfish Creek for the interceptor.
What is an, what is the interceptor?
The sewer interceptor, the sanitary interceptor that serves the west side of the village.
Yeah, usually term like, like a large gravity sewer that really doesn't have a lot of other private sewers coming into, you know, small sewers. It's, it's meant to be just like, like a large feeder into a main area.
Did I hear correctly, um, something about purchasing something on Market Street? Is that, did I hear that right? Or did I miss here?
Well.
For the, to do the bike trail.
As you can see, see where we cross over there, um, eventually, you know, depending on where you cross, there, there's several complications with this. Anytime you want to cross the railroad tracks, it's obviously always a difficult thing.
Yeah.
But the railroad does, um, will allow, I mean, does allow, uh, at-grade crossings, you know, for pedestrian paths. But, you know, you have to be able to somehow line up over there, and, and that's not something that we've evaluated. If there's room between buildings, that could be something e- very easy, but, you know, some of those buildings over there are pretty old and looking for opportunities for redevelopment. And so maybe that's part of, um, part of what we do there is be able to, we have to acquire land and then maybe fraction off a portion for the bike path and then sell the rest, or, you know, those are always options we have to look at.
And I think actually, probably half the trail is in the old TIFF three and in the new TIFF five. The, the TIFF districts?
Yes.
So, so the, so when we, we amended TIFF three, uh, which is the downtown TIFF, um, I, I forgot, maybe five or six years ago. And like, it's a long story, but one of the things we did was we included the bike trail along Badfish Creek as a, as a project in that TIFF, in TIFF three. So now TIFF five now has included all the, the projects, and so Market Street that Jeff's talking about is actually in TIFF five.
Yeah.
And so if a property wanted to redevelop, we could work with the property owner, maybe to work out a deal.
Do we, um, do we own any of that property between North Bar Oak Avenue and Market Street? One, two, three, four parcels? Do we, do we have easements anywhere in there?
Do you see, um, do you see where the, the east-west, uh, route of the path there? We own almost all of that. See those, see the, if you look for the black property lines on there?
Yeah.
Um, there's actually a sixty-six foot wide right-of-way there.
Wow.
I, I.
That's exciting.
I said the same thing when I saw it, and, and I'm not sure, we have to look at what kind of agreement, because portions of that are being used right now for entry to tracky building and, and their parking lot and everything, so.
Okay.
Um, there's some things we'll have to work out with routing and access and use. And we, of course, own that sixty-six foot wide going into Lerner Park. That's kind of what made it look like, you know, we own it, so.
Yeah.
We should be able to at least get mostly in a direction there.
Well, the Oregon Rotary Club kind of has adopted Lerner Park as our
Yeah.
little pet project. Um, and I know that, I'm sure that our Oregon Rotary Club would be very happy to partner with the village to help make this happen. Because we're always trying to get more people to know about this park. It's so beautiful.
The Lerner Park.
Yeah, there's so many birds, there's butterflies, there's wildflowers. It's just gorgeous. And there, there are trails now, but a bike path would really increase the visibility.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Back in oh nine, Jimmy, we actually wanted to take a trail, make a tr- trail connection from the, the West Side Park trail into Lerner Park, but it's just, it's just all wet. It'd be so expensive. It's, that's, it's a little bit challenging soil out there.
Yeah.
Questions for Jeff or comments? And we, we appreciate continued looking at this, because the party in power probably screwed things up for the future.
Right.
I'll bite my tongue. Don't say what it's gonna do. But it's a good option, I think. Would be nice to connect to, to downtown and the west side, so. Thanks. Anything else on the bike trail? Okay, so back to park board.
Jenna might have a thought.
Yeah. I'll save it. It's not fully developed, so.
Okay. So back to park board for your adjournment?
Okay. So I'd be, uh, looking for a, an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn the parks board.
Second.
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you do.
Good way to get out of here.
Nice try, but. Okay, so we are at item ten, continuing overview of two thousand eighteen budget and questions issued from the board members. And what we've done, the second part of that, we'll do the first bullet point, discussion possible approval of debt service funds, Fund Three-O-seven post two thousand five debt, which is pages sixteen, sixty-one. And debt service for police and public works building ends in two thousand eighteen, which means the village will have to stop collecting impact fees for those buildings in two thousand eighteen. So, back to staff, any updates?
That, that's, um, summarizes it. I just want to point one thing out, um, if you turn to page sixty-one, please. And the very last number on there is a hundred and three thousand dollars. Okay, so, so when we borrowed money, Lisa, help me on this. We borrowed money in seventeen, um, we, we receive what was called debt proceeds, and, and this, this is a hundred and three thousand dollars that we can spend, um, however we want to pay off the debt. And typically, it's not that much. Typically, we, it's like ten or.
Couple thousand.
Yeah, and so how it turned out, and so we were, we've been, we were actually applying a hundred and three thousand dollars to bring the debt service levy down in eighteen to, to reduce the levy. However, um, initially, when Lisa and I were working on the budget, we wanted to take that and split that up over two years, so that we don't artificially lower the levy too much. And so, uh, we got some good news yesterday on the budget, if you want to hear it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, our road aid, um, is going to go up fifty-five thousand dollars for next year. And so, I think what Lisa and I are going to propose is that, uh, and we, we'll do a new levy worksheet for you for the next, next meeting when Jerry and Jerry and I are here. I think we're going to go back and we're probably going to not use the a hundred and three thousand dollars total and reduce that a little bit, and you, and carry it over into the two thousand nineteen budget, because we, we've been concerned about the two thousand nineteen budget, it's going to be a, a little bit tougher year than eighteen. We don't, we don't anticipate the growth happening or assessed value going up as much in net new construction in nineteen, so it'd be nice to save a little bit of that money to, to sort of flatten the levy out for nineteen. So, I just wanted to mention it to you.
Nice to get good news.
Yeah, we were pleasantly surprised by that.
Yeah.
And actually, I will say that Jeff just completed the, the form, I think, to the state, and we added a mile
Yes.
of roads, which is good, and, and then, and then we're going to spend, um, well, one point seven million dollars next year on, on streets. So it, our road aid should continue to not, hopefully not decline like it was in the past. It, it's a three-year average, I think that's how it's calculated.
There's a six-year and a three-year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had about half a mile of new roads, and then with the acquisition, or the jur- jurisdictional transfer of Jefferson Street, about a half a mile of road transferred to that.
So our, our road aid should maybe stabilize for a while, so, from the state.
Okay. So any questions on pages sixteen and sixty-one? So we need a motion to approve those pages, the debt service for police and public works buildings?
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, uh, Public Works General Fund, uh, pages nine and ten, Village Hall Post Office lease ends in June twenty-twenty.
So it's in, yeah, back in the general fund. So Jeff, you have these pages?
I do.
You do? Okay, good.
I'm just, if there's any questions, I guess. I could talk a little bit just about some of the repair and upgrades, um, that we're talking about. We always have some, some miscellaneous repairs that happen at times, but a couple of things, um, there's some fixes. I, I think some safety issues that we've addressed with our building inspector, uh, with some of the railing, gaps in the railings that, just upstairs, that I feel we need to address. And then, um, I'd like to paint those. They're, they're a little outdated, and so that's kind of what we have down there. The other one is, is just in this last year, in, in one of the offices, we're noticing, um, above each one of these lights is about a fifty-pound ballast. And, uh, those, those ballasts, they're, they're incredibly heavy, but they're also, um, they heat up, and they cause a lot of heat, which can cause problems in the summer. But we did have one this last year that started to spark up and, and actually burned some wires. So, um, what we're doing as we can, and, and we know we're in this building for still a while, is converting these boxes to LED boxes. We actually need fewer of them, and so that's why, just as a start of this process, um, included about four thousand dollars in there earmarked for, um, allowing us to possibly, we'll probably start up in the clerk office in the front area there where public see the most, and then continue to make some, some improvements. LED upgrades that we did this last year, if you'll notice, uh, you probably don't even notice them, but they're little sconce lights out front here, um, that were all fluorescents, and those were actually sparking at one time this last year, and so, uh, we worked with, um, Searl Electric, and they came up with actually a really nice LED retrofit. So they're, cost pennies to burn, burn forever, and, uh, uh, they look really nice, so.
On the front of the building?
Nope, inside, in each, both of, the first floor and the second floor. You'll see what I'm talking, they're, they're kind of a, just a little sconce light up there, and they've got kind of a decorative trim down below. But, uh, they look nice, and, uh, they were, no one probably didn't notice them too much unless you see them day in, day out, but, uh, they, almost all of them were burned out and, uh, couldn't get replacement bulbs or ballasts, and I felt they were unsafe too, so.
It's nice to have somebody new come in and see things at Village Hall that everybody else just looks at every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a fresh pair of eyes. Good job, Jeff.
Thank you. We're making little changes.
I can't even picture what the railing looks like.
Purple and green, I believe.
It's purple and green, right now?
And knitting paint.
Oh, good lord.
It matches the floor.
Matches.
It's brown, not purple.
Well, depends on what light. Some of it may be, as.
What color are you thinking, Jeff?
Um, that is, I'm gonna leave that up to, no, I don't know. We, we really haven't thought of it yet.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
Yeah. Orange, bright orange. Bright orange.
You should take a cue from the high school, because.
Don't, don't ask Jeff that kind of question.
Actually, I'm, I, I don't, I'm not bragging here on public TV, but, uh, I do a pretty good job picking colors.
Nice.
So do you have more for us on this item?
I don't.
Before we are, Jeff?
Nope.
So we'll go to item B inspections, pages fifteen and sixteen. It's our third year of using Safe, Safe Belt as a village's building inspector. Uh, Safe Belt gets seventy-five percent of fees, and we get twenty-five percent in that split.
And, uh, on page sixteen, that footnote under two ninety. Why don't you get to that? The, the amount of, the amount of a hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred dollars is correct, but that amount of one fifty-four thousand nine hundred should actually be a hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred. And we'll correct that in the, on, on page sixteen, the footnote? Because it, it's, that's seventy-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. What happened was we increased the revenue, and we, we forgot to go back to change that footnote, so.
Okay.
And if you remember, we, we renegotiated a contract with Safe Belt last year, and, and to go from a ninety-ten split to a seventy-five-twenty-five split. I think that's been a good one. Obviously, it's been a good one.
Yeah, it's been a good one. Okay, any questions on inspections? Item C, Public Works Administration, Public Works Department, two thousand seventeen accomplishments and two thousand eighteen goals and ten-year staff plan, pages sixteen and sixteen A and seventeen. And there's a note that a percentage of the director of public work salaries allocated to four and to five, and hiring of additional limited-term employee for village mowing. So, we are on pages sixteen, sixteen A and seventeen.
Um, you can read through. You can read through the goals and everything and accomplishments. It was kind of, I like this time of year because it does give a good chance for us to assess what we've done. And I find out even after we've done this list, I find things that I forgot about, and you know, with so much going on day in, day out, we tend to forget about some things. But did a lot of things, but there's still a lot of things to be done. And I think, you know, notable items to be completed, I see one mistake here, it should be 2018.
I didn't say that, yeah.
Notable items scheduled to be completed in 2018. You know, we have a big year next year with the construction of, you know, finishing up the parking lot over there with Jefferson Commons. The underground utilities are going to be a very challenging thing to be done next spring. You know, we'll be extending the downtown lighting. The Perry Parkway connection is really, that's been a long time coming, and I think everyone is looking forward. Anyone who, anyone that goes anywhere near the high school is looking forward to that being done. You know, and I think this is going to come out to work in our favors. You know, we're lumping a few years of roadway maintenance into one. We're actually lumping two years of mill and overlay and three years of chip sealing or...
Crack filling?
Correct. Well, no, well, the chip sealing, the, I call it chip sealing, there's another term for it. And then one year of crack filling. And that's going to equate to about a $500,000 contract. And actually, I think we're going to get some very, very good pricing because we'll be putting that out in the spring, and I think that will end up allowing us, in buying in such a bulk, so to speak, we'll be able to get some good pricing on that and get some competitive bidding on that. And just continue to work through some things. I think the next big thing for the wastewater treatment plan is a facilities plan. That'll be coming out, we'll be finishing that out in the next year, and that's really going to give us a roadmap for the wastewater treatment plant, and actually, our capital budget for the wastewater treatment plant should change significantly next year with the addition of several projects that we have on the horizon, but we'll have a much better feel for what those projects are next year after the facilities plan. And possibly, and hopefully, drilling a well number six in 2019, actually, and that'll be a big, next big step to add another well into our system. So that kind of is our goals and objectives. Talk about staffing. You know, I kind of went through the staffing a little bit back when we went through the mowing fiasco of 2017, but, you know, we've...
And now his name?
Yes.
That's great.
I got t-shirts made.
Excellent.
But, you know, we have not added a staff member for 15 years, and in that time period, we've seen a 32% increase in just over the population that we have, not to mention, you know, bringing subdivisions such as Alpine Meadows, Oregon Parks, Bergamot, Mary Hill additions, and a new business park. So, you know, that's, I look at this and I say, well, I know we can increase by 32% staff in one year. And so a couple of things that we're doing in the immediate future is, and most recently, you know, that I did reassign our custodian to a public works crew person, so that's in effect adding a person down to that, to the parks, or to the public works crew. Anybody I can add to that, whether it's full-time or limited term, is an asset for us, and we use everyone to their abilities, and I'm looking forward to having that person down there. Staffing-wise, I'm proposing a full-time equivalent employee to be split 50% between the water utility and 50% with the sewer utility. With the addition of our Vactor truck, well, a couple of things. I believe we need additional staff in our water department. We're continually kind of behind in our maintenance, our valve maintenance, our valve cycling. And then when we're hit with a water main break, it just puts us another couple days behind, and we still have to go around and get our billing. A lot of people don't realize that we have to dedicate a person, one man day a month, to drive the entire route in the village just to collect all of the meter data from the water meters. And so, believe it or not, we're working towards a system, correct Lisa, that will eventually be radio-based where we could literally, or anyone should be able to literally dial up their meter from anywhere in the world, and they can see what their water they're using. I don't know why you'd want to do that, but ideally, that would save time over time. But so from a water standpoint, the utility, the water utility can afford it at this point. The sewer utility can as well. With the sewer utility, I'm not looking at adding this 50% staff member person as a wastewater treatment plant operator. I'm looking at this as person that would be mostly dedicated to the Vactor truck so we can get them out in the Vactor truck on a much more frequent basis in cleaning our lines and keeping our lines clean. So that's our FTE for 2018. And then I'm also asking to add a half-time or a full-time during half of the year LTE at $11 per hour. And that's, this is another, this is, kind of came out of the discussion with the people talking about the mowing, and their response is, well, let's just hire these retired people that are looking for a summer job to work, you know, from May to, or April to October. And quite frankly, we just haven't had that many people apply in the past, but I'm hoping we can get someone who's newly retired, looking for, you know, make some extra money during the good weather months. And so that would allow us, we already have one that, and that person's term this year is coming to an end probably in the next week, but this would allow us to have another LTE, so we would actually have four LTEs, summer for the parks, and then have one LTE for the water, and then we'd add the new FTE that's split between water and wastewater. That'd be 2018. My feeling is, is with these, adding some of these LTEs can get them on the mowers and then be able to free up some of our full-time FTE employees for other public works tasks. And we're still mowing. Jeff Ryle. That's my quote. We're still mowing.
And we're going to talk about mowing at the next meeting. I know Jerry Ballack wants to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jerry definitely wants to talk about that mowing issue on public works jobs and so on, which I think we all just have to put that in the plan back.
And so if you see my 2019 to 27 staffing plan, you know, according to our, you know, just by percentages, we should be at about 18 full-time employees rather than 14. So my goal is to add this one full-time equivalent employee, water sewer in 2018, and then approximately every two to three years, add another FTE with, in 2016 or 2026, probably being able to split that again amongst the sewer and water utility. You see my funding proposed for the 2018 staffing plan? I think it's very realistic, and it gives us an opportunity to staff without having to dive into the deep end right away and such an impact to the budget. And then you see, you know, we will have to be looking at adding staff in these 2020, 2023 time periods, and quite frankly, those will just have to hit our budget. So, any questions?
At some point, the county's going to transfer Janesville Street and North Main Street to the village for maintenance, correct?
Correct.
When are those scheduled to occur?
Well, we have in, I mean, we have, we're actually taking responsibility, obviously, of Jefferson Street from downtown to Ash. That's going to occur November 1st is the jurisdictional transfer. We envision 2020, I believe, North Main Street from Grove to the McDonald's. I believe it's 2020. I think that's, we originally were 2019. We continue to look at that because we're trying to balance between our debt and the Dane County, or the DOT's projects for Highway 14. So we kind of felt that trying to move in 20...
Well, what happened was, this is my, this was my idea, I'm not sure is it turning out to be the best idea. I was concerned about doing Main Street before we did the new library about construction traffic, but just, I think, has convinced me that we could actually have construction traffic go down Market Street onto Johnson. So we'll go back and look at it again, I think. But the bigger issue is that if we were going to do Perry Parkway next year, but in 19, if the hotel hopefully gets built, we're going to be having to redo...
Do Park Street.
Do Park Street and the intersection. That's a big project. And Jeff was extremely busy on Jefferson Street this past summer, so the question is, could he actually handle both of those in one year? That could be a real challenge. We'd have to think about, we may actually have to hire someone. And we did that for a downtown project, an engineering firm. You're a dedicated engineer from the firm just to oversee a project, because they're both to be large projects. Even if we did Main Street or Janesville here, it's going to be a big deal. And the county, of course, wants us to do it quickly because they want to give us the roads, and we're like, no. And I talked to Jerry Ballack about this, we're like, we're going to do this, you know, at our pace, when we can afford it, and when we can actually do it. So we're not going to be difficult about it, but we're not going to do it every year. We just be, you know, we can't afford to do that.
Well, not all projects go like this year's. This year's was a challenge.
Yeah.
And we're still, we'll be bringing some stuff before the village...
But I think any time you close a street that people live on...
And use all the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Next summer, Jeff will be working on the extension of Perry Parkway, and there'll be some disruption, but there's nobody living there, so it should be easier summer for him, you know, easier project, so.
It doesn't require a detour.
I'm going to try and drive along it, honk at you just to give you some...
Just the frogs and the turtles and stuff, yes.
So questions for Jeff?
It's probably minor or silly, but for the new LTE for mowing position, does it have to be for mowing? Like, or just, are we just approving a new LTE and then you get to decide as you need?
Just approving new LTE, and it really is where we use that person.
Right. I wasn't sure if that was specific for that since...
Given the sensitivity, I wanted to just make sure we're emphasizing that, you know, this is, and honestly, I mean, quite honestly, I don't know, I still don't believe when things are growing as fast, and I, you know, categorically feel that, or I feel, I don't see the necessary to mow certain areas, but we're going to tackle that battle at a later date.
Any other questions for Jeff? Yes, I want to comment, Jeff, you had a lengthy list of things that were accomplished, things you're working on, things for 2018, and I know it's a lot of, a lot of things to deal with and a lot of complexity, and I think I speak for the board, we appreciate how you do that.
Thank you.
You do that well, and in addition, you keep us entertained at meetings, so.
Thank you.
It's all good.
Always need a court jester.
I think, and I think it's also important that you live here, you've lived here for a while, and it's your community, too, and we can tell that by the way that you do your job, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Mark was always very community-minded. It's nice to have somebody follow who lives here that is also, because that's a key part of how things happen over here, so.
When it becomes your own backyard, that's when it's personal.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on item C, what item D, engineering, pages 17 and 18?
I just have one comment on engineering, Jeff, you probably, I forgot to tell you this, but I'm thinking that we may want to add about $1,500 back into the budget for engineering in 18. We're trending up, and at some point, you shouldn't keep going over in budget, so it's at the bottom page 17. It's right now, it's at $6,000. I think I'm going to make it, I'm going to get it up to $7,500 for 18.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was on bottom of page 17?
Yeah.
Okay, anything on that item from trustees?
I meant to tell you that, sorry.
You will go to item E, Public Works Machine Repair, page 18.
Just one of those areas, yeah. It can go all over the place depending on, as the equipment gets older, things go up, but we try to keep it under control.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go on to item F, Public Works Garage, 18 and 19. Okay, we'll go to item G, Snow and Ice Control, page 19.
So this is where, I think Doug was asking, you know, or somebody asked about us taking, we're going to take over CC, and we're going to do a levy adjustment. So in theory, how this is supposed to work is that we take over the stretch of CC from Ash to the downtown. We get to adjust our levy for that under the DOR, Department of Revenue rules. The county is supposed to then reduce their levy. We have no, we can't make them do that.
Yeah.
But, so we're going to, I think Lisa agrees that, but if we don't adjust our levy to capture that, we've lost it forever, so we're going to have to capture it.
Yeah.
And Jeff's working on that calculation for us, so we'll know that. I'm not sure we're going to know that by the 23rd.
Yes, we will.
Will we? Okay, so we'll have that information for you on the 23rd.
It's on a sticky note. That means it's getting up near the top.
Okay, okay. So we'll have to adjust the levy for that.
Yeah, we'll estimate maintenance and annual upkeep.
Okay, that takes us to item H, Traffic Signals, pages 19 and 20. Says the cost sharing of the signals with the county will change in the future upon the transfer of ownership of county roads to the village. So we will then own them. Any questions on that? Item I, Street Lights, page 20. So we pay $101,000 every year for streetlights?
Yeah, that's a contract, I mean, we contract with Alliant Energy. They, we basically pay a pole, or per light charge.
Yeah.
And as new subdivisions come on, we will continue to pay, you know, five or six new poles and everything like that. But, yeah. And they come out, I will, I would like to use this opportunity to just commend Alliant Energy and John Zelinski. He's an Oregon resident, and I send him an email, and it is literally repaired the next day, all the time.
Great.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, item J, Stormwater, page 20. We will go to item K, Tree Brush and Leaves, pages 20 and 21, and the treating of ash trees by Arbor Systems is ongoing, the ones that have been selected for that treatment.
Is the village cutting down the dead trees or Arbor Systems?
Depends on the size, and if it's something we feel like we can handle. Some of the really large trees, the largest trees that, or the hazard trees were up and are and were up in the cemetery, and so what we'll do with them is we'll contract them, drop it, and then we cut it up. So they have a little more, they have a lot more experience of dropping these large trees. But if it's six to 10, 12-inch tree, we drop those.
Okay, item L, Cemetery, pages 21 and 22.
Jeff, is the, in the budget notes, the 5760 LTE for database entry, is that for the program that we bought last year that...
It's the program we're buying, yeah.
Okay, we haven't done that. I was going to ask what the status of that was.
Right, right. That's one of, that's a project that's kind of been backburnered just due to being busy at times, but we're moving ahead, and you'll see a request to purchase that software...
23rd.
23rd at the, yeah, I know I had submitted the memo and stuff for it, but Candy and I looked at this in depth, and we, actually, I calculate, we have 6,600, is that what I told you, I think, the other day, actual grave sites up in Prairie Mount Cemetery? And so there's a lot up there. There's an old database that's probably eight years old, I think, that the cemetery software program, or people were saying for about $5,000 or $6,000, they could import that. Our view of it is we're going to have to go through and verify and check everything anyways. It would be better if we just use our manuals, which we know are correct, and have, hire an LTE staff person really to do the data entry and to get us up to speed on that. So that's what that's in there for.
Okay.
Can you talk to 290? The difference between the projected actual in 17 and the budget?
Between the...
What page are you on?
Page 22, above, at the very, very top, other contractual services in total cemetery.
Going from $12,800.
Right. Well, we just, that's for the lawn care, and we're under contract with them right now for that.
Why is it dropping so much?
We didn't think we would, you know, be needing it, I don't think.
Yeah.
You know, that's the contracted services... You know, that's, the contracted services for the cemetery, that we felt that was enough to cover the, the lawn mowing. That's about all we predicted right there.
We try, we try to look at trends for a couple of years. If you budget and you have a couple of years in a row where you're constantly under the, under the budget, then we take it down for you to see if that, you know, rather than, you know, it's called creeping. You get creepiness in the world. It starts to creep up every year and you just try to prevent that, so.
So, do you think that projected number's off? Do you think that coming at seventy-four hundred dollars right now is probably more likely to land around eight than it is around twelve?
Yeah, maybe the projection number could be a little bit off, yeah, yeah. We can, we can look at that.
And quite honestly, when, I mean, when we were going through the budget, we did start to look at areas where, you know, because we knew it was gonna be tighter this year. And we looked at areas and, and we did cut some areas. We said, we just might have to tighten things down in certain areas. And I think that was one of those.
You know, I think if there's one thing that I learned, um, from the grass mowing incident of twenty-seventeen, or however you.
Grass cop, Grassopolis.
Yeah, Grassopolis. It's, it's not so much whether or not people were right or wrong. I think you're always gonna have people on both sides of any issue. But I think people generally just don't like having things done to them. And when they feel as if they aren't part of the process, they almost revolt. Um, just because it seems like the right thing to do until they get all their facts is to dig in. So, I think you have really, really good ideas. And for example, now, if you were gonna say, you know, I, I, I don't think we need to spend as much time mowing the cemetery and I've got good reasons for it. It just seems that maybe if we spent a little bit more time educating people in various different ways, and you've done that exceptionally well, like for Jefferson Crossing, or Jefferson Street was a amazing example of how you got way out ahead of it and educated people every step of the way. My guess is that you, well, I'm not gonna guess, but I think that that template is a great template as you go forward and, and you see things that need to change. And maybe just take a step back, take a beat, educate and give people an opportunity to. Add their two cents and then move forward with whatever you think is prudent.
Right, right.
You might have less resistance.
Yeah, and we're not, the only thing as far as change, you know, we're not mowing, mowing at the library, or mowing at the cemetery is all contracted mowing with an outside service. And, and we actually have gotten a nice contract with them for the last, I think, four years. So, so that's, and, and we deal with that. I mean, that's, mowing the cemetery is a difficult, very difficult thing. There's just obstructions all over the place up there. And we get some complaints that are justified and, and we have to kind of rein them in a little bit at times. Um, and have them go up and blow off the graves and, and that type of thing, but, so we're not really changing, we don't plan on changing operation up there. We actually plan on improving a service to, to a day where eventually someone can do a lot of cemetery research online without having to call our staff and, and, and that kind of stuff, you know. We can actually have pictures of gravestones and people can do research from anywhere they want to, to find out. You know, because there's a lot of genealogical research that people wanna do and that can be very time consuming, so. But operationally, we're not planning on any changes right now.
So, any questions still on that or comments? Okay, that takes us to item M, which is a motion for items A through L, uh, in this section.
Slow move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Just thank you very much, Jeff. Another great year and I'm looking forward to another great year to come.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Polls, motion carries. Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That takes us to item twelve, Special Funds. Uh, item A, page twenty-nine, the Sick Leave Fund.
That's, um, as I look at sick leave expenses, health insurance, that's a really huge swing. Can you talk through that real quick?
So, this, this is what, this is the fund when somebody, there's a few employees left in the village that when you retire, you, you get a, a payment. And this is that complicated thing that Lisa and I went through and we presented to the board where your person retires and depending when they retire, they, they get to stay on the village's health insurance at their age. That's what that number is. It's only.
Eventually, it's gonna go to zero.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've probably, there's probably six employees left.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. That, they're eligible for the program, I should say.
Right, thank you.
Okay, then we'll go to item B, Community Development Authority, the CDA Fund, page thirty-seven.
We, we just keep this in existence in case we ever wanna reactivate the CDA, so that's what it is.
Okay. Item C, Preserve the Water Tower Fund, page thirty-nine.
Yes, we, we just have some money put aside, or, I'm sorry, budgeted just for something minor over there during the year.
And I've heard a lot of comments on the water tower, how much people appreciate.
Jeff just gave a tour of pump works directors today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great to see at night.
Oh, at the tower, yeah.
Item D, Herman Cemetery Trust Fund, page forty. So, they left some money. We buy flowers in the spring and wreath at Christmas time.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we can spend, spend all the funds.
We've been spending it down, uh, because at first it was just directive, just interest and the interest added a hundred and fifty dollars or whatever it was, sixty-two cents.
Yeah.
Doesn't buy many flowers, so, yeah. Eventually, it go away.
Okay.
Can you remind me again, Lisa, of what the negative total means? I've seen it before, but I'm just looking at this particular one in the Herman Fund now.
That's fine. So, this fund has a fund balance of a hundred and fifty or whatever the amount is that the family put in for the flowers. So, when it shows a negative, it means that we're using some of the fund balance to pay for those expenses that year.
Thank you.
Okay, so item E, Refuge and Recycling, page forty-three.
That has the new rates in there for eighteen, which Jeff and Lisa calculated it out.
I still hear good comments about Pelletary.
Yeah.
They're very satisfied with what they do. It's great change.
Didn't we renegotiate a contract this last year and the rates actually went down a little bit?
We extended, we extended the contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes out to.
Yeah, we renegotiated and it actually dropped.
Right, yeah.
And it dropped a little bit, but now we've added more services, so.
And then page forty-four, item F, the Room Tax.
So, this is when, when the hotel gets built. I'm being, I'm being a lot more optimistic now. I'm not saying if, when it gets built. And we, we collect our, our first set of room tax, uh, money, we're, we're gonna pay the, our general fund back twenty-five thirty-two. We, we advanced the, this fund to create the room tax ordinance and everything, yeah, so we'll pay it back.
And we just keep collecting, right, and keeping it at the village?
Exactly, yeah.
Wonder if you were listening back there.
She was, she was.
She's paying attention. Item G, TIF two, Special Revenue Fund, pages forty-seven and forty-eight, enclosing TIF two and creation of affordable housing funding.
So, we've already done the affordable housing. Uh, we did that back in, in the springtime. We have to bring another resolution. I'm hoping to actually get there for the next meeting to, to actually close TIF two. And then, and then we're having audit done on it, so. That's, that's the TIF up on, on the north side Business Park.
Okay.
Would you remind me what the Affordable Housing Fund is intended to do?
So, the, the state allows us, before you close a TIF, to have one year of increment put aside for affordable housing. And, uh, as Van De Waal, uh, our consultant, has said, it's pretty, pretty open. Um, I've, I have tentatively, tentatively said that possibly we could use it as a carrot for when we, um, if we knock the senior center down and the library and we're gonna build senior housing over there, we could offer it as an incentive to a developer to say, if you wanna do a project with us, you get to collect some of this money for, for housing as long as you do affordable housing in the development. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, item H, TIF three, Special Revenue Fund, pages forty-nine, fifty and fifty-one.
So, that's, that's the downtown TIF, um, which is now really the, the expenses really are gonna be running, mostly expenses will be running through TIF five, which now is the overlay district.
Any questions? We'll go to item I, TIF four, Special Revenue Fund, pages fifty-two and fifty-three. Uh, Headquarters Restaurant began paying interest on TIF loan in two thousand and seventeen. Interest payment will stay in TIF four, but increment will be transferred to general fund to pay back advance. Item J, TIF five Fund, pages fifty-four and fifty-five.
So, on, on page, uh, fifty-four, I mentioned this in my, in my overview the other night, that, uh, we now have created the fifteen thousand dollar downtown facade grant. So, now we're using increment for that versus using a levy as we did this year.
Item K, TIF three Debt Service Fund, pages fifty-six and fifty-seven, uh, second year of debt service for Grow More Loan. Okay, item K, TIF three Debt Service, whoops, I just did that, didn't I? Item L, TIF two Debt Service Fund, pages fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Braun Road Loan Paid Off in two thousand and twenty. Uh, bill escrow this amount when closing TIF two. This goes really fast when Jerry's not here.
How are we gonna pay for that?
Quiet, Jeff.
Item M, TIF four Debt Service, uh, Fund, pages sixty-two and sixty-three, uh, Debt Service on Loan for Engineering of Park Street and Janesville Street in Intersection. Item N, TIF two Capital Projects Fund, page sixty-four, forty-eight hundred dollars budget for closing TIF. Item O, Developer Stormwater Fund, pages sixty-five and sixty-six, the fund share of DiMaggio Park property acquisition is budgeted. Item P, Street Improvements, pages sixty-nine, seventy and seventy-one, Board will review street projects at meeting with Director of Public Works.
So, on page seventy are the streets that Jeff's proposing to mill overlay. Next year.
I will say, one, one of the things that, one of the things that everyone, I think, realizes, we go through every two years and do what we call a Pacer rating. And that's a scale of one to ten on, on the, the condition of the, the streets. Twos, threes and fours are in pretty poor condition and I'm happy to say that, um, with this investment we'll make in the streets, we'll be eliminating almost all the fours and, and above or below. And, uh, we still have a few, but, uh, it's, the ones that'll be remaining that we aren't doing are ones that require much more of a capital investment of a utility improvement such as new water main, kinda like what we're planning to do in Washington and State, so. But it's a nice, it's a really nice chunk of roadways focusing to kind of, you see Netherwood, Oak, um, and Perry Parkway. Now, we're gonna have the Perry Parkway extension through and the high school construction complete. It seems like nice to be able to, and Netherwood gets so much traffic over on that side, so. Be a good, good addition.
Yeah, that, that looks to me like a really good selection of streets that you have.
Thank you.
That's good, yeah.
Jeff, under sidewalk and bike path, I see over in the corner of, um, South Perry and Main, you guys are working on the, the snow or the, what's it called, the Superbowl?
The Superbowl?
Yeah.
Isn't that neat? It's, I, you know, and, uh, I mean, the village, if you remember, the board approved the, the, uh, work for the storm sewers to be extended out there. And, um, we've been able to get a lot more free dirt than we ever thought we would, so actually that pad up there is about three times larger than I ever envisioned, which is good. It's, it's actually, it's, uh, what, what you'll see in the next couple, couple of weeks is they'll finish the extension of the storm sewers. And then, um, uh, Nick is actually gonna, Nick or one of our other public works guys is gonna be on a, a small mini dozer that we'll rent for a day or so. And we'll do all the contouring over there to, to get it ready for at least, hopefully get some erosion protection down and some seeding and then some snow over it.
And then the plan is to put the sidewalk in, in?
Spring, or, well, spring, summer.
Okay.
It, it realistically, it'll probably be a summer, fall project.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's looking good.
I think it'll, it'll look really nice over there and I think, and hopefully it is a fun little area for, for kids and stuff. We're gonna try to smooth it out at the bottom, so it's not the, you know.
The nosebleed?
Abrupt transition, the ejection seat at the bottom, yes.
My daughter got a few nosebleeds on that hill. You should, uh, note, uh, let people know when you're having the mini dozer out there, because I'm sure there's a lot of kids who'd love to watch.
Yes.
That, uh.
If I can, just a little bit, when we were out demoing or showing the, all the public work supervisors, uh, from about twenty-five people out today and we were showcasing the, the new Vector truck. And so, we're over in the parking lot right across the street here. There was a, a daycare-like group of about twenty-five kids that went by on the sidewalk and all the kids were like. It was great. It was kinda fun to watch, because the guys were sitting there going the same, you know, they were, we're all kinda looking at the machine and everything, but, uh, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I know my kids would love it.
So, anything else on street improvements? Item Q, Cemetery Land Purchase Fund, page seventy-two.
What, what is this?
I was gonna ask that same question.
So.
Like fifty bucks.
We're not buying much land at fifty bucks.
Pardon?
Why even bother?
We're not buying much land.
There's fifty dollars in this fund.
Well, so, when I first got here, the village was putting, we had a lot of sinking funds when I first got here and we, and we, well, we, we ran in some tough budgets and we basically stopped doing that for, and we, we had a, we had a note on here about how many lots we had left and all this and, and, um. Right? Yeah, so, so every time we did an update to the CIP, we always had a little bit of money in the CIP. Well, as you remember, the one we, we're asking, we're probably gonna ask the board to vote on November twentieth, does not include any cemetery land purchase. So, it's just a, it's a fund.
Okay.
And at some point, you know, the village may buy some and that's where you would buy it from, through that fund. That's a long answer, but that's why it's there.
Okay, item R. Office Equipment, Village Hall Building, Public Works and Parks Equipment in Fund four fourteen. Pages seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five and seventy-six. So, ongoing computer replacements, replace tables and chairs in Village Hall Boardroom and Community Room, purchase of trees, purchase new leaf vacuum truck and general public works equipment are included in Fund four, four fourteen.
So, just like the police chief, Jeff met the CIP amount right on the, right on the button, so I, I thanked him for, him and Brian for doing that. So, it's a good way to start the first year off of the CIP. We'll see how long we can last doing that, but we're gonna try, we're gonna try.
Can you explain that a little bit to me? I, I'm not tracking.
Sure, so when I, when I showed the board the CIP, what we had for like, for public works, I said, you get twenty thousand dollars every year for five or six years for the public works and police. And so, um, I didn't say you, that's all you can buy. I'm just saying in this five-year period, we're gonna try to hold you to that amount as a, as a total. Well, Brian and Jeff both are proposing to budget twenty thousand dollars for their equipment. And, and, which, which also did not include the vacuum truck. That was a additional. So, I, I just appreciate the first year out, we didn't exceed that, so.
Yeah, thanks.
And that vacuum truck, I think, when Jeff and I get complaints this fall, it's gonna be wonderful to tell people, one more year.
One more year, yeah.
One more year, please be patient. We'll have another truck out there.
And we actually, I've, I've actually already solicited some pricing, um, for this that, uh, that they'll get through twenty eighteen. And, um, you'll probably, we'll probably bring this, if this is approved, we'll bring this to you very early in the year, so we can get it ordered and delivered before fall.
This is one with a single operator, right?
Single operator, yes. Single operator joystick controlled.
Yeah, it's like a video game.
It's efficient.
That's analogy I use today, too, yeah.
So, you're not gonna be back there this year picking up pumpkins through the big thing?
The pumpkin sucker? No, we'll still, we'll still operate.
Everyone's telling us that story that.
That was kinda fun.
As a new public works director, you spent a day running that piece of equipment with your guys and.
I did, yeah.
You were amazed that it could suck up entire pumpkins.
It was, yeah.
That's pretty impressive. I remember that story, yeah.
But we're, we're still gonna run the old machine.
Yeah, the pumpkin sucker.
And now Jeff will be in the new machine running that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you won't be walking.
We know that.
They won't let me do that thing. They won't let me on any of the good equipment.
Okay, item S, Oregon Bike Trails, pages seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Uh, Rotary's thousand dollar annual donation and additional signage in the budget for the Rotary Trail. The two thousand and seventeen borrowing provided funding, five thousand dollars for an engineering study for extending the west side bike trail system. At tonight's meeting, village staff will review a conceptual map for the bike trail extension with the board, so.
So, that was what we did.
Yeah, we did that with the park for it earlier on.
And, and we just never got, Jeff had a, obviously, a busy summer. We never got a chance to put the new signs up on the Rotary Trail, which we're gonna try to do next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, will that complete all the signs we committed to?
Um, oh, I think we, I think we've done that.
We have all the ones for the Keller family?
This is the kiosk, right?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, this is, this is more like.
This is a kiosk.
Yeah, a kiosk, for a map showing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, kiosk, for a map showing, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and, yeah.
And as we extend this trail, it'll be even more important for people, I mean, if we make the connection to the Badger State Trail and people are coming into the village, that kiosk will be important, so they won't get lost in the village, yeah. And I think this is what Jeff was talking about before. Um, you know, if you've been on bike trails lately, you see that, that more and more communities are putting, they're called fix-it stations. It, it, it's an air pump and then it's got, got tools, you know, attached to it. It's attached, it doesn't, it doesn't get stolen. It's like about a thousand dollars. We may put one on the Rotary Trail.
Sure, great.
If you notice, uh, email that Mike sent on the county budget, um, there's five hundred thousand dollars in county budget for applications for grants for, uh, bike and pedestrian transportation. So, we can't do that, but we'll be working with Fitchburg to encourage them to. And they've, they have, uh, indicated a strong interest in proceedings, so we'll see where that goes. But that's, that's a positive step right now, a positive sign going forward, the Rotary Trail to connect to the Badger State Trail. It's not easy yet, of course, but-
That's because of Steve working, Steve, and then Jerry Bolick working on this, talking to Joe Parisi about it, yeah.
And if you haven't been on the-
Thank you.
If you haven't been on the Yara River, Lower Yara River Trail yet, you have to get out there. That's a, that's an award, that'll be a national award-winning trail section through there from McFarland over to, what is that, Lake Farm Park?
Yeah.
Take the kids out there on a nice afternoon. It's about a mile long of bridge right over water and wetland and you would, you would not believe. It was eight, eight point something million dollars, I think.
Yeah, it was eight million, under budget by a million dollars, but it's a lot of money. What we, what we want done to connect ours is three miles and a whole lot less money.
Yeah, it's not gonna cost eight million dollars.
Which is what I told Mr. Parisi when I met him. It's about eight million for McFarland, let's get going with ours and be a whole lot less and get us connected to it, so.
But there will be, yeah, there'll be a day where we wanna go from Oregon all the way over to Capital City Trail, all the way up over McFarland, down to Stoughton and back, all on trail.
Yeah.
Okay, item T, southeast Business Park, page eighty-one, continuing planning in two thousand eighteen for east side of Highway fourteen.
So, Jeff and I have been working with, uh, our consultants, including Jason, our village engineer from Rukie and Milky, and the board authorized, you know, the listation analysis. And we are proposing, we're probably gonna bring that to a special meeting, I think it's December eleventh. Well, I'll make, I'll make sure I get that word out, but we're still, we're still working out some of the details, but, um, and, and when we do that, I think we're probably gonna ask the board then to authorize, um, uh, Van De Waal to update their, their twenty-fourteen TIF analysis. And we're hoping, I'm hoping that a cash flow is better than, we, we know the cost is coming down, what, what we're talking about. So, I think it's, it's promising.
So, we're getting closer to going over on, across.
Yeah, and we're gonna invite, we're gonna invite the property owners in the town of Rutland to the meeting whenever we do it.
Yeah, good. Okay, item U, TIF three capital projects, pages eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-four.
Yeah, so they're, they're now in TIF five, that's why they're, this is zeroed out. It's TIF three, yeah, okay.
Item B, DNR grant, page eighty-five. Approximately three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is owed to the general fund for the advance, which purchased homes on Florida Avenue. On the two thousand seven flood, future developer stormwater fees will help to pay off the advance. The village may have developer fees in two thousand seventeen, eighteen to pay off some of this advance.
Now, this is where I miss Jerry Bolick, cause he asks me this every year.
I was saying maybe he'd forgotten that.
I, well.
He'll be really happy.
So, I, we purposely put that note saying that we really think we may have, uh, developer fees, uh, this year or next year, we can actually take a little bit of that off. So, it'll make Jerry happy, so, yeah, well.
Okay, item W, TIF four capital projects, pages eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight. Budget for consulting work for two thousand eighteen projects, including removing the old motel building.
Yeah, so I, I was looking at this today. We're gonna have to, um, well, probably before we adopt the budget, we're gonna have to update the budget, this, this budget for demolition for the motel and, and, uh, I'll try to, we'll try to come up with, um, you know, we're gonna get, obviously you get rent for half of next year. We'll have to put that money into the TIF as well, so we'll, we'll, we'll kinda revise this a little bit.
Okay.
When do we start the process of finding a property management company so that they're ready to go in December?
We're, we're actually, Jeff and I are inspecting the property next Thursday afternoon and the prop-
That should be fun.
Yep. And, uh, the property manager that's managing now will, will be with us. So, we, we'll, we're probably just gonna offer or ask him to give us a proposal and bring it to the board.
Sure.
Yep. Cause it's only gonna be for six months.
Yeah. Okay, item X, Oregon School District Forester Grants, page eighty-nine. Uh, we served as a receiver of a DNR tree planting grant for the school district.
So, this is, this'll be the last year you actually see this budget, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was at the middle school. Did a lot of really nice work over there, so, that was good. Item Y, Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, page one oh six. Okay, we about ran out of alphabets, we have to approve some things.
I know, I thought of the same thing.
So, we need a motion to approve item, agenda items A through Y.
Slow move.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item thirteen, two thousand eighteen water and sewer budgets, uh, discussion and possible approval. Village's water and service utility is currently classified as a Class C utility by the Public Service Commission. Now with over four thousand reported customers, utility will be designated as a Class AB utility beginning in two thousand eighteen. So, what effect does that have?
I'll let Lisa explain that.
I really haven't had a chance to look at it that much, yeah. I think it's just, um, more reporting as far as some of the, um, general ledger account numbers are gonna be split down a little bit.
Okay.
And renumbered.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be a learning year.
Yeah.
We, we've looked at it with, we've had a few meetings and we've, I think where we've ended up is, is looking at having someone maybe from PSC come talk to us or have a conference call with them to kinda see if there's a checklist as we go into this new, new year.
I have gotten some stuff from the auditor, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it'll be a process and, and I think there's, I think we have to have more detail like for where everything is within the village, too, or something, but we have a lot of that already.
Yeah.
Through GASB, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Okay, so we have pages ninety-two through ninety-eight, the water budget. The bullet points, first year of revenue for the Lincoln Road water tower lease. Uh, seventy-two thousand dollars of other non-operating income is based on an estimated forty new homes multiplied by the eighteen hundred dollar water impact fee. Uh, fifty percent of full-time new position is in the water budget and the review of the water capital budget. Any comments needed here or questions?
I was just gonna say that, you know, Jeff, Jeff spent a lot of time and was very patient, but he finally got that Lincoln, uh, water tower lease done and it's really a very nice revenue for the utility.
Twenty-two thousand dollars a year.
Took, we did a lot of, took a little bit of time, we finally got done, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And pages ninety-nine through one oh five, the sewer budget. A hundred thousand dollars of other non-operating income is based on an estimated forty new homes multiplied by twenty-five hundred dollar sewer connection fee and fifty percent of the new full-time position is in sewer budget and then review of the sewer capital budget, pages ninety-nine through one oh five. Any questions or comments here? So, we need a motion to approve those items.
Slow move.
Second.
Thank you. Last chance for questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, item fourteen, October twenty-third is our next budget meeting.
So, see, that will also be, we're gonna have some regular items on, on the agenda as well, okay. So, the budget will be after, I mean, will, will be after that.
Yeah, okay.
So, are we meeting next Monday as well?
Is it, no night meetings next week. Yep.
Night off to make up for the night.
So, it's not to, and not to taint the voting before or everything, but, uh, and, and I think you, I thank Jeff for his comments and everyone else for their comments as well, but, uh, I'm, I'm thrilled to, to be here and, uh, another great year in the books, so I think, thank you all for that.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. So, item fifteen, a motion for adjournment.
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.